Okay, good morning. It is nine o'clock on Monday, November the 13th, 2017, and I call this Potter County District Court. Today we have a heard honor from Hope Street Office who will do our application, so please stand or remain standing.
Let us pray again. We decree that all that is before us, with all the blessed of our lives, we're grateful for the privilege of being in this place and the freedoms to exercise our citizenship in this country. We also give you thanks that those persons who are before us who ventured the call to elected service are doing so with open and willing hearts. We know that there is no flawless aspect of government and there is no perfect person, but we give you thanks that both are striving with the highest ideals to do the best for the greatest good. So bless all those in this place. May these conversations reflect a care for all and a thankfulness for what you have imparted to us, so that those who come behind us will look back at history in the hour when we gave ourselves a service and knew that we were faithful and maintained a firm foundation. We give you thanks for all those in the Potter County Public Service Arena, from those who tend to things that are not seen, to those who stand in all areas of law enforcement and the first responders. Protect them and keep them safe in this day. We pray these things in your body and powerful name, grateful for the love that we see represented in your son, Jesus Christ, and all of God's people that say.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I read the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Number one is recognition of minutes from October 21st, 2017, and October 27th, 2017, for Potter County District Court. There's no minutes to that or nothing else to talk about, and so recognized, we're ready to go. So vouchers. You consider next one approval, the pay on vouchers processed by the county archers office from the period of October 18th, 2017 to November 8th, 2017. Check numbers 1-774-70 through 1-777-91, and wire transfers 9-80 through 9-93. And the total amount, this is also including accounts payable and payroll and a postage amount, all total of $4,249,381.91.
Four.
Four. Because today we're doing the payroll at the same time.
Yeah, it just fell on the normal.
Looking for you, you'd have to get up two days a month. Okay, so the total amount, this is for the accounts payable, which is on your, on this voucher sheet. Payroll is $1,545,721 and postage virus 12,000 because Santa Maria was in the middle of the day. So total is $4,249,381.91. I make a motion that we approve the vouchers as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please. Zuber, thank you very much. Insurance report, and recognize insurance report is passed here.
Who's having unusual?
The unusual, okay. Thank you. So recognize. Number four, the Potter Randall Appraisal District, who has come back upon casting a ballot to elect five of the nominees presented to this court by this court to pass a resolution in support of the vote. Now. Says that we get 1,500 votes, that they told us we would get 1,400. Well, you're on the board, so you never think it's me. But it shows us to get 1,500 votes.
Fifteen divided by five is three hundred, rather than two eighty seven.
Two eighty seven, so how do we?
Your resolution shows two eighty seven, so I would just recommend we distribute the votes equally across all members.
Two eighty seven each. I recommend that too. I have a motion. Is that a motion?
I make that a motion, yes.
Would you like me to restate that, Julie? Please.
Yeah, why don't you restate that?
I make a motion that we approve all five candidates for the Potter Randall Appraisal District. That's Leon Church, Gilbert McGon, Katie Ledbetter, Zachary Plumber, Cindy Spanell, and distribute the votes equally across all five members.
I have a second, probably on the second and all. So a motion, second, all in favor, which right here. On post five zero, and pretty much. Number five, tax incremental investment sum tiers two, consider an eight to one participation agreement for the East Bayway Tax Improvement Zone number two, Amarillo, Texas. Andrew, if you would, this here, Andrew, you want to come up and address the four of us?
Good, how are you? Good. So, I think it was about this time last year that Bob Cowell came around asking for your support in this new tax incrementary investment on B-side town. So it's been about a year, but now it's, it's ready to go. We've got a final plan prepared that hasn't changed since the preliminary plan that we presented to you last year. It's still the same, same goal and objectives as far as the public infrastructure out there and the new athletic facility. There's nothing preventing us from supporting that service. Just to refresh your memories on what the zone is, it's nine hundred acres, situated between east and the lakeside, basically surrounding Big Texan, just a little bit to the south by forty, forty to the north by forty. One, one change that you would see in the final plan is, for some reason, our base year was off just a little bit. I tried to research that, and they went from market value versus the taxable value. So instead of the forty-three million five hundred sixty-seven base year, it was actually thirty-nine million eight hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. So that will be, which overall will help because that is set a lower base year, so future.
Can you give me that amount one more time, Andrew?
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine million eight hundred fifty-three thousand. Eight hundred ninety-five, which is the correct twenty sixteen base year.
Was this originally not, not talked about? They talk about a million, a hundred million dollars a month.
That, that is the projection.
That's the projection, okay.
That's what we're hoping, and once we get that, we'll be able to do all the public destruction and that. So that's, that's the goal.
And the base year, I'll add a couple comments if I can. Andrew, the base year was twenty sixteen, and so that's where initially the dialogue was. We thought that value might be forty-three million, and after the plan actually went into effect, it was roughly thirty-nine, which in the end may help because that increase is what's pushing into the TIF fund. But the projected economic impact of a hundred million, that has not changed. That is still the goal. It's a thirty-year plan. You know, we, we obviously have representation on tiers two, so this is not the first year you're hearing about, the, the updates on that. But we are going to move the upper body bodies to formally pass this resolution. So when I'm speaking similar to this, I often say this is really just the formality of what our action already was. We went to the hospital district last Monday, if I remember correctly. We're scheduled to go to the AC Board of Regions and the Panhandle Brownwater District is on the eighth.
And the hospital district.
Andrew, the one thing that I think this court would have a question on is the total of ten members. So I know the court was owed, if you will, one member back to that board. There's only nine total members. Will you help us understand the steps after this resolution? What will happen?
Right, yeah. The original way the board was set up was nine members. As you recall, that was actually the way the downtown set up too, and they went back and did a revision to the ordinance to make the total ten members and three of those seats being for the county. So right now it's Helen Burton, that's the county representative. The city appointed Commissioner Diaz chair, she'll convert to a county seat, and there will be one more seat for the county to appoint. Our plan right now is after all the participation during this event, voted on, we'll go to council on December fifth to approve the final plan for adoption and also to have first reading of the ordinance changing that.
So I think that's an important timeline as we start to think about who we would like to appoint to that additional seat. Just something to kind of think about timeline-wise.
All right. Any questions, Andrew? Any questions in court? Any questions in the audience?
So in this agreement, it does only point out that there's nine members, so is there going to be an amendment to this?
That won't be very good. Yes, we haven't finally adopted this yet, so I can go ahead and change that as well. So I'll make that my minor adjustment. I think I had another number I need to change just to match the new base years. We'll get that adjusted and then we'll be all adopted at the same time.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve a final participation agreement for the East Bayway tiers or tax increment reinvestment zone and purchase.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, which right here. Zero, thank you. Number six, 2019, West Texas Judges and Commissioners Association Annual Conference in Amarillo to discuss and make any decision necessary to start the planning process to meet the court's responsibility hosting this conference. We're excited about this.
Yes. The end of April of 2019, I'd be posting the West Texas Judges and Commissioners Associations Conference here in Amarillo, and our major responsibility as host court is the one, I think it's Monday evening, activity, which is a dinner and usually there's a dance. So we have some choices, ways we can handle it, but one is to come up with fifteen thousand and let them do it, or the other is for us to do it. Personally, I'd like to see a local group do it so that it's, it has the Amarillo flavor rather than somebody from Midland or North Dakota doing it. So I guess my, my question here is, who wants to be involved? Does anybody want to be involved? I know that I've already spoken with the convention in visitors' council, they're ready to meet with some of us to start the planning. So if nobody else wants to be on it, I'll, I'll go with it. If someone else would like to be on it, that'd be great.
We'll take our turn if you go in.
You want me to dive in pet first?
I mean, I'm all for, this needs to be, this needs to be, we've done this before years, years ago when I was, started working for Judge Greer. Wow, that's a lot of work. We did it, all commissioners, their spouses worked on it, and it was hard. And I will tell you, I was not a happy camper. Very stressful. I'll say we have her sometime. I mean, seriously, if we can think about it.
Like fifteen out there, maybe some days very strong.
Judge, before we, so we won the bid, right? Commissioner Church, I remember being at the conference and going to the vote, it'd be the big deal, that we won the bid and it was kind of coming back to Amarillo. So that was step one. So that was a good win, and then obviously with the downtown development and all that happening, what that might look like. Should we really understand the detail before we hire someone who spent fifteen thousand?
Oh, we've got some time. We've got some time.
Yeah.
We'll talk about the detail, but.
Says dinner.
I don't want to use any candy.
I would agree with that.
I don't really need to raise. And that's what this group, I think, is starting to do. But if you don't mind, I'll start the process by meeting with the, with the convention of visitors' council. They're really into it because they're smart people and this is what they do.
And they know how to do that, yeah.
Yeah, and so.
What about Center City? Are you involved in that? That might be good, a good.
No, we could.
Do y'all have vendors that come to your conference?
Oh, yes, but that money all goes to the association.
Well, when we had ours, we had over forty, forty vendors in, and they paid fifteen thousand down, so.
What are they?
That support us.
Well, we need to work with the association to see if they have any money for us, but as I understand it, all that money goes to the association and not to those, those who, I will find that out.
So for now, in our way, we can get some.
Get started.
Yeah.
I, I think that's a joint, Commissioner?
I'll say.
If you'd like some help, I think I can work with you on that.
All right. Okay, good. Thank you. Number seven is 2017 United Way Community Status Report, Bureau Status Report on 2017 United Way.
Katie is on the case, yes. And she's, she's coming up. Judge, I can provide just a little context. I put this on the agenda. I'm on their board of directors, and United Way, as they, they do every year, has unveiled their 2017 community status report. One of the things that I always find very interesting is even though we are a city with two counties, there are two very different dynamics in both counties. And I think that's very evident with the things that we deal with at this court. Some of the things we wrestle with, some of our split votes, you know, we are very much a different county, and I think this status report really highlights that. So I, I've asked Katie to just, you know, for a few minutes, kind of give us a high-level introduction. This is a presentation that she's, she did for a whole hour. We don't have that time today, but I did want to use this, some of this time to, to introduce this to the court.
Thank you very much. All right, I've got my timer over here, so. All right, just to, to give you guys a little bit of a background, this is something that the United Way of Amarillo Canyon does every year as a gift to the community, and this is our fourth year of providing this to the community. Businesses use this for planning purposes and for staff meetings. They use this as a communication and education tool. A lot of nonprofits use this for, for training and for grant writing, and just for communicating the importance of what they do and for how they're impacting the community. This release was just done at the end of October, but it covers the year 2015. So when I'm referencing this year, I'm talking about 2015, because that was the most recent data available. So we're gonna, what I'm gonna cover, some demographics, some education information, some health and statistical information, cost of living, and I may even get into some vulnerable population information. So I'm gonna jump right into it. So going into some demographics, Potter County for 2015, the population remains stable, just increasing 5.1 percent. But for minority residents, you are increasing, and the proportion of black to white residents continues to decrease, but the proportion of Hispanic and other racial groups continues to rise. And we are seeing that particularly among younger ages, and that can be attributed, the increase can be attributed to the migration of minorities into the area and higher birth rates among minority groups. We go into education. I really want to talk about the importance of early childhood education. Specifically, high-quality preschool programs, especially for economically disadvantaged children, can lead to significant increase in high school graduation. Additionally, children who participate in these programs are less likely to become addicted to drugs or be incarcerated. And they are more likely to take an active parental role in raising their own children. So when you look at programs like Early Head Start, the longitudinal studies show that they don't always stay ahead. They may fall back later on in life when it comes to the educational outcomes, but the far better outcomes are that they're gonna graduate high school. They're less likely to be incarcerated. They're less likely to be addicted to drugs, and they're more likely to be a parent. So when you look at the foster care system, we all know in Texas, the foster care system is a mess. My personal opinion is that foster care system is a mess in all fifty states. Programs like early childhood education and Head Start are making a huge impact in the success in the lives of those children. They're helping stop the cycle of debt continuing. So to have that information come to light and longitudinal studies, that's like over thirty-year lifespan, that's, that's huge. Program enrollment rates are closely tied to the poverty rate in the community. Forty-nine point seven percent of children in Potter County were enrolled in programs. And just as a comparison, only forty-four point two percent of children in Randall County were enrolled. In all regions, and so the regions looked at, Texas is a state, Lovett County, Potter County, and Randall, since we just had comparison, so in all regions, enrollment rates have decreased from years thirteen and fourteen, fourteen, fifteen. So that's a concern to us. Knowing the impact of, of what the benefit of those programs are, to see those enrollment rates decrease concerns us as a United Way. Potter County decreased by six point four percent. And the decreases could be related to increasing incomes, people thinking that either they don't get the program or they don't overqualify, they don't overmeet that benchmark, simply because they make just a little bit more decreasing poverty and funding issues, quite frankly, from state. It's no longer some kind of priority. High school graduation rates forecast a no encouraging look in, in Potter County. The high school graduation rates continue to increase. Potter County had an upward trajectory since 2011, and with last year, and then last year being 2015, making a dramatic increase of three point seven percent in high school graduation. So that's awesome. This is possibly related to the work of No Limits, No Excuses, and the work that they've been doing at AISD, particularly in the Palo Duro and Caprock districts. And so we just really want to give credit to No Limits, No Excuses, and the work that they've been doing. In 2013, Amarillo Infant School District made the decision to cover the cost of SAT and ACT fees for all students. And this resulted in increased test participation. In 2015, ninety-six percent of twelfth graders took one of those tests. And this was an increase of forty-eight percent from the previous year. So that's just one more step to those kids going to college. And I also want to point out that one of the things that I'm proud of with AISD and programs like No Limits, No Excuses, is that they're not just pushing college being a four-year institution. College is military vocational training, certification, and associate's degrees. All of that falls into what they consider college. And if you hear the expression, what's your plan? They want students to have a plan after high school. It's not enough just to graduate and, or achieve a GED, although that is something that they want students to do as well. So with that in mind, we're gonna go on to the next topic, which talks about the job growth report from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, which showed that six out of the ten fastest-growing occupations do not require a bachelor's degree. In 2015, the proportion of people with a bachelor's degree or above was sixteen point eight percent for Potter County. So that's low. All right, so that's much seven in the park. So I'm gonna buff it through some of the rest of this. All right, cost of living. Median household income for Potter County is an upward growth pattern reaching just over forty thousand dollars. So it is increasing. But we are worrying that the cost of living is greatly affected by insurance type. And the difference in families with self-funded and employer-funded insurance policies is remarkable. So health insurance costs, an average of just over five thousand dollars for a single individual and almost eleven thousand dollars for a family of four. And single mothers in Potter County do not make enough money to provide for their families, regardless of whether or not they are self-funding their insurance or if it's employer-funded. They're not making enough money. I'm gonna tell you, that's the most significant thing I can tell you today. Single moms in Potter County are struggling. Single moms in Potter County are having children at a faster rate than moms living in average means or above means. So that is, what I'm telling you is that children being born into poverty or being born at a faster rate than children at average or above means. You have a poverty problem in Potter County. We have a poverty problem in Potter County. I'm a Potter County resident, and even if I weren't, Amarillo sits right in the middle of two counties. This is a problem that is citywide. This is all of our problem. United Way, what do we try to do? We try to fight poverty. We fight for the education and stability and health of every person in every community. And Potter County has a poverty problem, and it is, it is overwhelming. And our community status report shows that it's just, it's just climbing, climbing, climbing. And I'm telling you, these single moms are overwhelmed, and they are not gonna come together and decide that the decision is to just not have children, because it is a very human decision to want to have children. In 2015, Potter County uninsured, uninsured children fell by forty percent to only two point seven percent, which is good, and that is partly due to the Affordable Care Act. But uninsured adults increased by three point nine percent to eighteen point seven percent of residents. So more children are being covered, but less adults are being covered. I will tell you, I brought copies, ten copies of this community status report. We have limited copies printed. There's enough here for commissioners and some of you up here on the panel, and a couple of you here in the audience, but I also want everybody to know, it is available online, and there's also more graphs available online, and they're all printed in this report. You can also look at previous years on the report. I will also tell you that STI rates are going down in Potter County with the exception of syphilis. It is exploding in Potter County. They increased by eighty-five point three percent in 2015, and again by a hundred and thirty-five point three percent in 2016. If you want more detailed information on your STI rates, I encourage you to call Casey Stottn at your health department. And the rate, you need to know, your rate is twice as high as the state of Texas. Also, suicide rate.
How are those reported? Are they reported by the hospitals and health clinics? Because there isn't that in Randall, so, or other counties around. So does that skew this figure?
Well, there is some of that in Randall, actually. I'm here just to report on what's going on in Potter County, but there's a lot of monterias, that was going on in Randall too, because people in Potter County are sleeping with people in Randall County. So. Yes, we're sharing a lot of. Yes. Yes. So, and it gets tricky when it comes to reporting, like drug abuse and some of these, some of these things, because it is anonymous, and you have to look at, but when it comes to some of these diagnosed STI rates, some of that goes into an area that is not my expertise. But hospitals and clinics have to report, make them report anonymously, and it just becomes a statistical informational piece. And that's where your local health department becomes the local expert when explaining some of the details on this. Our statistician collects some of this information from those various sources. They get it from state level, local level, et cetera. Your death rate by suicide also exceeded the Texas rate by forty point six percent. So syphilis and suicide and poverty. So syphilis and suicide and poverty. I've published that game with other groups, but hey, high school graduation. It's, it's, that's good. So you're graduating kids from high school, but we gotta, gotta give them condoms, and we've got to tell them about making choices, about how to avoid poverty. And there is a way to do that, which is graduate high school, work full-time, and wait until you're married or have a steady second income before having children. And that, if you do those three things, you will reduce your chance of living in poverty down to two percent. And that is in our report as well. So I am out of time. There's so much more in here. There's some cool things in here about refugees and the ways that they are adding to our community and not taking from our community, but I encourage you to go.
There's a lot of information I've got a lot of questions for you, but my question, Commissioner, about two years ago, we had a session with all the entities, not going to the court. They said, uh, government was worried it was wrong, and we had time to actually get in. Is that something that's?
We can, we can, we could coordinate with P R P C was kind of our neutral body that coordinated with all of these governing entities to post meeting, you know, post the agenda that we would all be in a forum, but that we had a dedicated time. We can certainly do that. I didn't want to assume that the court would like to head in this, that direction again, but we can certainly do that. There are a couple of things that I think are very helpful, not only for the court, but certainly this audience. I look back, I look out in the audience, and I know that the majority of you are very, very engaged in the community and are on boards in your own right. And so I think what's happening in the county was always difficult. I go to this in the public, and the media is there. And the very first question we get is, so what is Potter County gonna do? You know, and so I think it's a culmination of everybody coming together. A couple of things I'll highlight quickly, Judge Kennedy, that you wanted the agenda, but there's, in this report, about eighty percent in Potter County do not hold a bachelor's degree. So we talk about education heavy in this report. The median income in Randall County is fifty-two percent higher than that in Potter County. So that obviously drives how much disposable income people have to spend on different things in the city. And then what is categorized as vulnerable populations, so in particular our children and our elderly, but that the percentage is increasing. The child poverty rate in Potter County rose by nine percent, and the elderly poverty rate rose by thirteen percent. So I wanted to kind of highlight that. You, you touched on the single mothers and their income, but I think that's important just for us to know what we're wrestling with as a county. I know that we do have very different hats on in what we do in the community. Education is a big part of what all of us believe in, and unfortunately, what we get, and with the sheriff, I want to speak for you, Sheriff, but what they all often get is, well, now our jail is full. You know, so we get the end of the line, and we go, how did this happen? And we start to reverse backwards, but I think this information is valuable, to know you have it at your fingertips. But Commissioner, if you would like us to, I can certainly reach out to P R P C and coordinate this meeting so we can ask some direct questions. But I wanted to definitely use this time to, you know, make everybody aware of this, that it's out there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Katie. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, this is just, of course, my opinion. When you mentioned three things, what did you do? I think what I have in that, that's something that's spiritual, a spiritual context to all of this. That's my perspective.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Number eight is Potter County extension office to hear an update from Brandon Deuce on open H R positions.
I'm not Brandon.
Just getting your report today. Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here. Yes, Brandon was not able to make his move. He had some other commitments, so I am here in this place to give you all a brief update on the position. As you know, the ag position is still open for internal applicants only. Brandon has visited, said with several potential applicants, but he hasn't been able to, there have been no formal interviews at this time. So what's going to happen with that position, it will remain internal. He's going to be for another month, and then it's going to have to go external.
Are they just hard to come by? Is that the problem? You just can't find them?
Then, yes.
Or just don't?
Can't find them. Apparently, I mean, you know, the ag agents that we have, I say stolen, it's stolen by other entities because they have some valuable skills, and they sit on several boards, and I know, you know, some of the marketplaces, companies, the knowledge, some of the commodities, things, some of the.
And towns, around the town.
Right, yes. Yes, that's right. Randall has taken some. And so that is the update for the ag position. So stays internal, and then of course, it has to go external. You guys, anybody, if you guys, anybody, anybody in the ag field that is looking for a position, be sure nothing else. The four H N E development position, this is a little good news. Brandon has interviewed two applicants. That position is open until today. I don't know if it's five or midnight, but if you know someone, they still have some time to get their application in. He is going to invite Judge Tanner, the commissioners, you will all be invited to sit in on interviews if you wish. And then hopefully, his goal is to have that person ready to present to court here in the next meeting or the fall. That's what we're looking at right now. So I appreciate your support through this time, and we have continued to be there for our families. We can provide the education programs for Potter residents. So I appreciate your support. And thank you, Tom, and the staff. Yes, bye.
Hope so.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you so much.
You always bring a refreshing confidence that there's someone down to get the other to just buy, looking in there.
So that's always what you asked her to do.
That was just one of the information that I'm gonna take one of these because. By program. I just wanna mention something I forgot, and I don't know if I have mentioned this. Did I flip a little bit? Yes, I'm not a family, did you know that, Commissioner? I'm not a family and consumer sign agent.
Every five years.
I am, yes, I am a family, community health agent. Wow, whatever you go.
Did you get a pay increase with that?
No, it's not a pay increase, unfortunately. I have to remember. I feel, I feel bad, way back to being a home economist, you know.
Sounds like you should give me a decrease.
So family, you need help, and you'll start to see that.
I don't know what I wanted to.
Okay. Thank you, so much.
Thank you so much. Number nine, parking garage lots utilization. To discuss the utilization of paid parking for battle for employees, the district court building, the overall house, take anything necessary.
I did want to get a, a, a briefing on where we are, I mean, that, that outline is complete now. Very beautiful, and a number of spaces and great arts and, and yes, I think we spent a little over a million dollars in being, in being able to pay that. So if you'd like to get a briefing on where we are, it's for utilization and.
I could give you a little bit of the background. When we were ready to move in, Shannon took people about the horns, and she, she got, she sent emails out to everybody in this courthouse and district court building, and said, we have a hundred and fifty slots who'd sign up for it. So she really bought the placards and the new budget, right?
No, there was a, no, I just came up with the idea.
Okay, well, never mind you. We didn't.
I didn't buy anything.
We got the backers right on the car to show that they were employed in Potter County, they have a permit. And so everything's good. We had a hundred and sixty-four people sign up. So we were like, really excited. And so whoever one came, it's been Shannon, and we signed up. She put their name on the permit number. I mean, everything was just going great, and then all of a sudden, people just said, then, don't wanna do it, and then turning back in. So Shannon, I think you have, I hate to push you on the spot, because I know you hate to be put on the spot. So for us, it's. But if you can kind of give us a rundown of how many people are turning back in?
Oh, I had about a hundred and fifty-six. I think we had a hundred and sixty-four originally, but there's been thirty-four people that have turned them back, which leaves a hundred and twenty-two spots where they're supposed to be used. And I've had there's a quarter of that that's being actually being used.
So, and I will be, first admit, and I'm a little bit of a bully, and I sent some emails out asking people to please, please use, please use these permits. Please, you cannot pick and choose what day you want to use them, use them every day, or turn them in. And I had a lot of people in this courthouse that went with me and said, we're doing it, we're doing it. I had a couple offices that said, we're not, because we don't want to. But there's, they still have the permits. District Court's building is a different story. We had most people over there turning back in. About thirty-four something turning back in in that office, most two offices, district court, and district attorney. So, you know, I'm at a loss. This is taxpayer money. It's free parking. I've talked to Emerald National Bank, Happy State Bank, Sue D W T over here. They have to, their employees have to pay to park there, or they walk two blocks. Or they park in our lot over there. Or they park in our lot, yeah, and they do, and they, we've, we've tried to police that, the sheriff, we put signs up. We can't watch them there. So I need suggestions. I don't know, I don't know what else to do.
So what's the issue or concern? I mean, you had a lot of enthusiastic participation early on. You see, I think sixty-four that wanted to be a part of that, that, so, so you all the spaces were filled, and now you've got about, what, thirty or so that?
Yeah, and the problem, the problem I agree with was that I was trying to, to help out with the juror parking in the district courts behind the district court building, because that is the biggest contingent we have, is if there's no place for me to park. So with this parking garage available, with all the employees who park there, they cannot give the permits to the jurors. That would be a headache, Caroline, would it not? We'd never get them back. They would not ever get them back. So there is no, there's no, well, second chance to do this. It's all falls down to the employees who park there to create the space.
So what's the, what's, what's the major complaint or issue that?
You know, I don't know. Caroline, do you have, some of your employees, what do they, what?
That's high security, security.
Security. They think that there's not security in the, in the parking garage?
It's not visible if it's there. We have encountered people that are homeless or transient, whatever you want to call it. And so that is, you know, sometimes a concern when you're the only one coming down the stairs or whatever. So I know some of our staff members have encountered people over there, so, you know. And with the, particularly at five o'clock, with the sun coming down, and, you know, if you're walking out there a little bit late, nobody wants to walk in there over there by themselves. So, I mean, we park over there, so.
Judge, maybe it would be worth having a jury from the city come speak to the court. You know, I'm, I'm on the L G C. That is the most secured parking garage in this entire city. What the infrastructure that's in it, and so maybe that's a good discussion to have, and come in more of the county, down to the detail of the amount of security.
I know, I know they have cameras. I don't think they have anybody just.
No, 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 they don't have foot traffic, foot patrol.
No.
Our staff, if they, if, when they use it, and now that with the time change, they're using their afternoon break to go and get out of the parking lot and come over here and park. There have been a couple. I know one instance last week that was real, it wasn't in the parking garage, but it was on the way to the parking garage, and it was real scary. The one girl, she lost her wallet.
And she just dropped it out of her pocket, and a homeless guy picked it up, and she chased him.
Yeah, he really ran.
He took her money, she got her thing back, but they had nothing to do with the wallet, and she wasn't in there.
Well, it's just the fact that there are homeless people are, you know, around. If you're, if you're a single woman walking in the parking garage, I mean, it's kind of scary. I mean, it's scary.
We definitely take that as a, as a next step, to the city's time and the government's security that's in it. I mean, at the end of the day, it comes down to elected officials, right? What happens in this county is very different than even city government. Everybody operates in their own bubble, and it's until elected officials are held just as accountable as the commissioners' courts. They have to be leaders in their departments and ask that their employees do that for the greater good of the constituents. I personally, I have a hard time with that because we spend a lot of money in their offices. We've made some significant purchases, whether that's software or infrastructure. So I feel like the court as a whole has tried to be good stewards and pour into those offices. So it's, it is difficult when I feel like we have found a good deal, right? A million dollars for a long-term parking agreement, and when there's a way out, it's like, oh, it's too hard, too far, it's too hard. So, well, I guess, you know, that's not safe, and so we get this catalog of things.
One question and one observation. Go ahead. I feel a little bit like the same, Commissioner. I think we can, we can solve the security problem. I don't think that's unsolvable. It's, what we may have more trouble with is that there's a concern about people knowing when you're going in and when you're going out, that that's why you're not utilizing the parking garage, and I think that's, that's a sad situation. I hope that we all be good team players. Like you said, we don't have a whole lot of say, and the way time we have to say is a budget. I think that's something needs to be remembered.
So I think the next step is that, certainly, there isn't seem to be a concern. So Caroline, is that a growing concern to you or?
I think it's been a continuing concern. I wrote that they could not park in the parking garage on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, because that's when we had parking lot, because that's when we have jurors, and we know that. And I think they're finding other places to park. You know, I told them that the, the street was going to be giving tickets, and, you know, they told me they're parking in Herring Bank, the sheriff's parking lot, and on the street.
So.
I, I will say this, speaking, because the girls talk to me a lot. When we, we all were alright. We, every single one of us got a parking space. But we thought that we could park there when, I mean, we know when there's jury duty and when there's not jury duty. And when there's not jury duty, there's all kinds of parking in our parking lot. But then we got the email saying it's either all or nothing, and we thought, oh, well, there was probably people waiting to use those spaces, and we were just going to use them on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Or like in the morning, and then go move our cars back when all the jurors go, leave.
So here's why I like that.
And so we thought, oh, well.
I just bought a million dollar home, and I'm making the payments, but I won't live there.
Well, we didn't understand that it was just part.
It should know, it's every day, it's every day, we made that payment every year.
Yeah, I think the staff were real surprised when they learned that we paid a million dollars.
They didn't, they didn't.
They were surprised, and they just found that out last week, but you, I.
It's for twenty-five years. I didn't, I was before.
Yeah, I mean, it was.
And considering the amount of parking, what's also getting ready to happen?
It's a must for everybody in the county. I, I don't think people can do it. I mean, I, I can say all day, you can't park in the parking garage, I mean, parking lot, and they're gonna find places to go.
The other day, there was a big, I mean, just give this one observation that I made. There was a jury trial, I think, Wednesday. Big, apparently, every court.
Yeah, they were pretty busy last week.
I actually saw an employee in the district attorney's office who just turned her badge in, her permit in. She parked on the street, that, over here, and walked all the way to the street.
You know, there's probably ten D A cars that they use for investigators that are on the parking lot all the time, every night, too.
Probably five. There was, we got first run, so it's not today.
Well, I, I came up yesterday, and there were ten cars on the parking lot.
Well, there probably is.
You had to take those cars apart, my other district court, I don't know why they do that.
The D A's will say, five best.
Well, probably the next thing that's gonna happen is the city, I noticed there was an event, the World Range Rodeo is here all weekend, and our parking lot, I went to basketball games all weekend, so I know our parking lot was full. And I'm sure the city's gonna come to us and say, well, I already had, and said, we want you to put parking alarms, we want you to charge. And, and, but they won't pay for the arms, and they're a hundred thousand dollars, so I'm not doing that, so, I don't know.
Well, I just speak for the as a whole, Judge. I mean, the city is still, this has come up at the L G C, right? As an item for the council, they're starting to get their hands around paid parking as a whole, and even street parking. So I definitely don't want to speak for them. I'm not in that lane, but I'm just, I'm kind of just echoing that to say, get ready, right?
Yeah, they're gonna put parking meters, they're gonna charge you to park on the street.
street. And as for our parking lot, our, our parking lots...
So, so, so is, is there a conversation needs to be held between the, the good, the teams of the law companies? And, uh, as you, as you mentioned, Caroline, you didn't, your employees didn't realize that we had paid over a billion dollars for this or something?
Well, that's true. That came out last week. They were surprised, but still, I...
I have that in the very...
I think, you know, it's good.
Yeah, we're going to do the tours and stuff, so. Um, but that, that's the area where they're, it, it's just not... I just feel like it's, it's just all made in the furs. People of this building are good, are pretty good. Yeah. And they have probably walk. So, I don't know. What's the next step? Do you want to talk to Jerry?
Judge, I can reach out to Jerry if he'd like to come inform the court, but I think it just as a matter of practice, uh, the department heads and elected officials in the room today, I mean, at a minimum, I, I think we're asking for you to take another look at it, right? This is a capital investment that we made, and at the end of the day, we can have anyone come in here and talk about the infrastructure, but until you're willing to be a part of that conversation, it just...
No, I have done it more than once. My husband is requiring all of his staff, and he feels like we need to be a part of the county. I said that, too. Then we came back and we re, re-looked at it, because, I mean, the parking lot was not full at all times. What is the D A doing? What's their participation? I don't, I just don't want it to be on my list. Yeah, I don't want it to just be on my list.
Yeah, it's not just you. I'm not picking on your question here.
Well, I kind of am.
I think, yeah, we want to stop parking in the garage, is that when it snows or it gets icy, we'll go in and our cars, you know, or hails or whatever, we've got space to go and we get that.
It sounds like, uh, to take a, uh, breath base and commission a church or a spiritual, it seems like we may need to have one of these committees.
Committees. Well, and yet, I mean, our, our office, we, I do, I've told them, got a park over there, that kind of stuff, but it's, it's hard, you know, when you see, like, you know, Happy State Bank employees, and so there, there's no enforcement on these parking lots at all for any Tom, Dick, or Harry to park over here. And you know that they work in these different areas down there, so, sorry, not my husband.
Yeah.
But, um, so, I mean, those, those are kind of the things, because there are signs up there that says, "Tony isn't forced," and it's not.
It's not.
So, and it's happy employees have that.
Okay, but on a serious note, uh, we did pay a million, eighty-nine thousand, uh, hire taxpayers within the building. They would certainly not be, uh, very pleased to see that parking lot is complete and, and employees not utilized. So, we need to come to some, come up with some way to address this issue and get the honor. Bring in Jerry, uh, maybe the sheriff, including as far as this conversation, I don't know what to say. But, uh, certainly, security is a concern, uh, if we have it, if it's real, but, uh, I think that we need to visit.
Perhaps we can hire one of the homeless people to be security. Give them a job. I love, you know?
Seriously.
But, no, no, I mean, I'm being serious. And, and, and another thing, too, is that we need to free up space for people to come to courthouses to do business. And when I have a probate of a person that's over sixty-five, they have to walk three blocks to get to my office, I'm embarrassed. I'm embarrassed that they, they couldn't find a place to park in front of the building. So, it is what it is. So, you can hold Jerry, and we'll bring this back.
I was told last week that the hotels, uh, people were parking in the District Court lot. On regular...
Do you have proof of that? Did someone just tell you?
Somebody told me, and they were concerned, and whoever it was told them that that's happening, so I...
Sheriff, you've got two, you've got two guys there as security, and I know that they can't watch their parking lot all the time. They do try, they're willing to watch.
The only time I've ever seen anything has been overtime. And I've seen two or three cars over there, and when I come in at five, I nail them. Now, this weekend, it was.
It was bad.
The rodeo had everything down.
Yeah.
It was a big event, too.
Yeah, it was. And I'm sure it added to our company, and we thank them, so.
As far as during the day, I don't know that anybody's parking lot.
The only thing I've heard on the hotel employees, originally, they were parked over by the bus stop. And, and the hotel came back, and then lots of extra spaces, so they could park in the garage. So, I don't, I don't know if that's how it might...
I think it might have been during construction phase. There was a lot of that happening during the construction part of it, but I, I think it was...
I think, I think there, I think there are patrons of the hotel that are parking over there at night because they don't want to park in the garage. But like I said, I mean, I don't think I've seen more than five cars over there when I get here top there.
I'm not against it. Okay, all right.
I don't know if we want to contact the hotel and just have them in mind, but the people, as they come in to check in, they can park there.
All right, number ten, public defender office. Consider an act of the appointment of a committee to state advantages, disadvantages, procedures, and visibility by establishing a public defender's office.
I think top timing is everything. And, uh, I really seriously believe that we have, uh, elapsed with time, we've been a, uh, going beyond, I think we need to, let it live as it considers, the public defender's office account. Uh, I think a recent statistic just recently where we have seven hundred and fifty-eight hundred bases within the county that are more than a public defender's office is somewhat overlooked on that's called consideration. We've got over fifteen thousand bases in this county. So, first of all, I'm going to say that I really appreciate our local, our, uh, private law, uh, attorneys, the law board, that they do an excellent job, but there's some of them, some of them are disadvantaged and, uh, and it's rotating, rotating, uh, court point attorneys system. So, I wanted to put this before the court today. So, as I pondered the concept of public defender and checking to its legal definition, I immediately wondered why, as a county, going incrementally in population and individual criminal case load, we haven't seriously looked into a public defender office for Poty County. Given the notable stated advantages such as quality, cost, and administrative advantage, the P D O wouldn't operate for the defense as the D A in Poty County Attorney would operate for the prosecution. These offices are proficient in operation, and it shouldn't be expected that a dedicated P D O would operate for same. It has been stated that group law offices not only allow law, not only allow attorneys to share office and library space and administrative functions like billing, but it also improves their ability to learn from one another, match staff experience to break events, develop and preserve institutional methods of performing works, and, and, and avoid reinventing the wheel for each new page. As institutions, public defenders can attract additional resources that provide that private attorneys cannot, including grants, fellowships, and law student assistance. P D Os also enable judges, county officials, law enforcement officers, and the board to assess a single point of contact to, to secure the cooperation and input of defense counsel with improvements to operation of the criminal justice system or concern, making improvements easier to identify and implement. Finally, public defender budgeting is simpler and more predictable than budgeting or payment of private attorneys whose identity, great practices, billing practices, and case loads fluctuate every month or every year. This is also true of prosecution offices. It is so true that a move from centralized prosecution offices to hiring individual private attorneys to prosecute cases would be unthinkable. Obviously, there are some disadvantages, such as startup costs, which includes securing office space and transforming a existing court, attorney system to a new concept, although there is monetary help and guidance and support in this endeavor from the Texas Task Force of Public Defenders. As elected officials of this county, I feel we are obliged to strive for a system that provides quality, adequate, I say quality, adequate representation for all our citizens, regardless of their bank account or status and lifelong, and life along with working, to ensure a system is in place that represents the noblest always, mindful of our fiduciary responsibility always to our constituents. So, I wanted to put this before the court, say, LA is going to court, I think it's time that we look in seriously to prototone the, uh, the viability of adding a P D O office in Poty County, that we continue to grow and as our individual population and letters continue to progress.
Commissioner, as the oldest employee in the room, beginning with the longest running, um, history, we have tried to do this several times, and Jerry can admit this, we've tried at least three times to do this, but I think now is a better time, because the image of, uh, population is so great in this county every day. As a matter of fact, I think I told you, we spent a hundred and sixty thousand, actually, did it in the last three weeks on the court point attorney, a hundred and sixty thousand. So, um, I think, I think it's a good idea to do that.
Well, based on even the trends that we know, it's not going away, right? That's not what the trend is showing us. So, you want to, want a committee? I'd be glad to make that.
I want this court to, uh, come, to, uh, in fact, I will make a, I'll move that the court, uh, sort of, of the appointment of a select committee to look into the viability and the, uh, open con research we have to do of, uh, it's called, it's public defender offices for Poty County.
Scott, do you have any, uh...
Have a motion on the table.
I want to speak to Scott first before we get to, uh, what's your opinion on this?
Well, um, I'm not sure I have anything that would disagree with that I've heard here today. I think it's certainly a good opportunity, given, uh, the demographic trends we see in the county to look at efficiencies that can be gained, uh, not just efficiencies in terms of non-proficiency, but also in terms of, uh, representational evidence. Um, if we've got a point of contact, for instance, if we're missing a case, if we've got a point of contact, we go to a lawyer early on in a case and maybe get that case resolved before anyone spends much time in jail, before they spend, uh, time away from the job, before the, uh, before the disabilities of the criminal justice system really set in and take them to be conducted, who say, "That, that, that decision to, uh, was a criminal," uh, I would certainly be interested in that. I, I can't say that I can stand before you and give you the, uh, give you the waterfront view of what economics of it would be. That would be part of the process, be covered by the committee, but, uh, I would certainly favor giving a close look, considering the circumstances.
Okay, have a motion in a second to establish a committee. Uh, do you want to vote on that? Name of the people. Okay. Al Bayram, five zero. Okay, so obviously, you need to be Scott.
Before I, I did say before we begin, uh, the cost of the birth, uh, birth of a special nature of self-defense office in Poty County. I think we need to have a meeting comprised of not only internal members in the county, but also external as well. And, uh, I have business with a number of, uh, individuals, uh, on the, on the board that, uh, can handle, and I think also we need to look seriously at, I mean, the representation from every precinct, uh, within this county, to be a point of that to give their, uh, thoughts as well, as long as minority considerations too. So, before we start beginning to list names, I think the baseline of names internally should certainly be both prosecutors, uh, along with, uh, the auditor, the judge, uh, administrator, Poty County, and, um, along with the legal intern, external, uh, entity with the criminal defense, uh, or association, kind of, as well. So, that would be the baseline.
Would it be appropriate, um, now considering the action that we've taken today, would it be appropriate to, as in establishing the committee on the next agenda, so that we have time to kind of be diligent about thinking through what that looks like?
I think that's right.
And then we come back with our own opinions, and, and certainly the audience, um, would do that as well.
And again, with the, uh, again, with every precinct being asked, you know, to have to come active, uh...
Yes.
Either that or to ask, if he's had opportunity.
If you'd be okay with that, that would be the second here.
Should Goodrich, would you like to say something?
Yes, please.
Sure, come on up to the podium, like always, and please give us your name and your address.
Robert Goodrich, four one one one, Stony Point, the beautiful city of Emerald. Some nineteen eighty-seven. I had the privilege of visiting a, a legal services office in Atlanta, Georgia, that had been established at the behest of Griffin Bell, who was Attorney General, I think, I'm Jim Carter. And, uh, my visit there was as a prelude to going through training as an advocate and practitioner of alternative dispute resolution procedures. Dispute resolution alternatives are identified in Texas law as viable ways to address, uh, civil cases and, in some jurisdictions, criminal cases. The people who do this practice are classed as neutrals, in the sense they do not represent parties. They represent process. And the beauty of that is, there isn't a aggravation or an ugliness about two different sides getting off to argue for right or wrongness of something. A neutral takes a much different approach and involves the defendant, if you will, in this case, or respondent, to participate in deciding how we're going to solve this case. Truly, criminals can be prosecuted under law. Civil cases can be addressed in a lot of different ways. I would like to suggest that for the court's consideration, that when the formal committee please include alternative dispute resolution practitioners who are distinctly different from attorneys. Now, there are some attorneys who advertise that they are dispute resolution professionals in addition to being attorneys. I'm sorry, those are separate and distinct practices of, of intervention, I guess, in bringing about solutions to legal matters. It's sad but true, uh, but the public is not well advised about the availability of alternative dispute resolution processes and procedures. They insist for a main purpose, and that is to facilitate bringing about the solution of legal disputes in a more expeditions and less expensive way than historically they have been addressed. So, my hope is that it would be so kind, the law board has to appoint someone to this committee, or maybe two people, so you have an equal kind of representation, uh, when, when, when this committee's contemplation and consideration to make it unattained, that there will be a neutral perspective introduced. I believe it would serve our county. And I believe it would also help to minimize the cost of doing business and providing services for. So, you mentioned the cost of appointing private vendors or people being prosecuted or have problems or whatnot. Well, I see, I suggest that alternative dispute resolution practices offer a viable, cost-effective, timely, uh, addition to the bag of services that can be made available through this process. I commend Commissioner Bond for introducing that I did, and I encouraged my county gentleman commissioners to read this carefully about who you would appoint to, uh, committee study. I am not the brightest light on the tree of life in town, but I am a trained facilitator of alternative dispute resolution practices, and I've been doing that for some twenty years. I can tell you stories and make you air stand up, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich.
Thanks for approving this.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll bring it back in two weeks to, to, and y'all can think about, and, and lock them in. Good? Okay. All right. Number eleven, elevator contract, consider for approval, and bring up to the Tyson Truck Elevator Maintenance Contract, the same day, the... Good ones.
Or, or.
I was looking for it. I can see. Yeah, so more, yeah. Would we have any last names?
Okay, San Fe Building Elevator Contract. Before last time, there was a judge where? That was the contract that was the place for the authorization project to go off. So what happened was there were five elevators that were, that are in the San Fe Building to cover over that contract. You've got the three main passengers, you've got the historic elevators in front of it. We're now currently under the warranty period of that modernization, modernization contract. I got an email, I guess Tuesday of last week, from TK that said that they forgot to take the freight elevator out of that water station, uh, or keep, so we'll give it free service in a year or so, so they won't put it back under the contract, the cost of ten million four hundred dollars. So I've got a bunch of copies of this amendment if you guys do. Okay, I didn't know if Tad was going to deliver it. That's, I sent it to Tad and, uh...
So they may, they may understand what I said.
That was, that was exactly what I said, this is on us, except we're all going to back charge you, we caught it, we paid you that same thing. So that's the freight elevator in the alley. I sent it to Tad.
And that's the only change?
That's the only change, they just, they want to get paid now if they work on the freight elevator.
Is that, are these funds budgeted?
Yeah.
Did you explain how it was set up during the project with all of the projects?
I kept this, it's probably a lot better explained if you set it up this way.
During the mod project, I would get those five elevators up that the elevator for the alley underneath that same contract, because it was coming down to positively use the elevator contract, and I didn't want to hear them working and building on elevators at the same time, so originally through that project, that service fell under the law.
I make a motion that we approve the amendment, um, with Dyson, Russell, if I'm saying that right. Okay, so I'm sorry. Um, elevator maintenance contract for the San Fe Building, um, and funds budgeted to afford the change.
Have a motion and a second on favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Do you have the original contract fifteen in place, I can find it.
I have a copy.
Okay, do you have the original?
I have the, yes, probably.
Does anybody have their original?
What's that?
Okay, okay. Okay, number twelve, fire rescue equipment purchase, funds budgeted to consider for approval. A, a prepared purchase of a replacement fire truck under terminal procedure exemptions granted by Texas Department Code, section two six two point zero two four B and subject thereto, and the delivery of payment upon receipt of the fire truck. Richard, first of all, let me congratulate you and, and Mr. Callaway, everybody's in the, in the room that worked so, so hard to get that proposition A passed.
Congratulations.
Very, very good note, wasn't it? Very good note, okay.
Thank you. Uh, what we're looking at, um, basically what we settled on is we're looking at a two thousand nine, uh, custom fire apparatus that, uh, we have inspected twice, we've made a list on, uh, everything that needs to be done to it, company has, uh, acknowledged they're willing to honor that list and sell us the truck. This will be the second truck we purchased from that, the same company, and the first one turned out to be a really good, uh, experience for us, so we're more than willing to work with this company. And rather than do a deposit and then pay off the truck after it's done, because they're doing considerable work for us, rather than do it that way, basically what we've done with them is said that, uh, you finish everything on this list when we check the truck out, accept it, we'll issue a check at that time, we had no chance when we get the truck. We did that with the last truck purchase, they worked out very well for that part, so that's kind of what we're proposing to do against this time.
Did this come in lower than what we had mentioned?
It came in a little bit lower, and we're fixing it, I think it's three thousand dollars. When I went over the truck, I realized it didn't have a problem with all of it, it's got to be effectively operated, so we're going to buy that in addition. That's not ever possible provided for us.
So evidently it's a used truck.
Yes, sir, it's a two thousand nine model.
But kind of the use as a pad and it's been in the range.
This truck, we cannot find a better used truck out there, I don't believe. We have found that it has not fought a lot of fire, the mileage on it is acceptable for a city truck that's got roughly fifty-eight thousand miles on it, uh, hours on it are in the forty-five hundred range, which, uh, some of the last trucks we've looked at, we've had eight, nine thousand hours on it before it's bottomed, so, uh, we're not hesitant about the mileage and hours on this truck, seems to have had a very, uh, as fire trucks go, very easy life, very few penny chips, very few problems with it, and we came up with a pretty lengthy list of things that we've done to it, and the selling company agreed to it. Something else in total with this truck, it's a, it's from a department that replaces their trucks every ten years, they don't move to reserve status every ten years, they've already got replacement trucks in, so this truck is actually nine years old, and was one of the two trucks that they put in for, uh, sale this year. And it's through the City's Marketing Fire Apparates Company, it's a Pierce fire truck. And under this deal, Texas Fire Trucks were purchasing it from you, you buy the equipment as is in a market, kind of like a used car. Under the fact that this is a City's marketing fire truck that they're perusing for resale, we still have two integral parts of the ones that's going to be intact on the truck until twenty-nine. And I've already got written verification of it, we probably see the surface caps that will help and make, if we have conditions for this, so there's kind of a six-part warranty for the Pierce fire apparatus, and there's two of its parts that are still available to the ship.
Everything's all, okay, I'll just wait for it.
Okay. The only concern I had, and I think Chief Lake, I was just concerned with there's no warranty at all. That made me...
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we did with these fire apparatus, we built into that trap once before, where we didn't do our due diligence to make sure we got the best truck we could get. This one, we made two trips to check it out, we made a very detailed list on what needs to be done to it, so I feel really good that we're getting this truck, this is going to help with the new hydraulic pump on it and some other stuff, so they're, they're making sure that we're satisfied with the project and we're, from, uh, experience and from looking at the trucks every time, I don't think we're going to find a nicer used truck out there.
Let's see, what did you call it?
Three hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, that was for an emergency cab that I was trying to work in from the truck, uh, this Rose Bar company that used, I went out for two separate bids from that company to try to get a, a demo or program truck in place of buying a used truck, and we're roughly eighty thousand dollars, so I think this is going to be our first one.
And Chief Lake, you told me the other one, this is emergency, so I need that one, but you had another media hit that was no longer in the line, is that the transition?
That's correct, the, the truck that we discussed is budgeted that, uh, we're not going to send it to auction right away because we have some parts that we need to take off that truck to keep the elevator running. So it's going to be pulled off the road, it's not going to be used, but we will be using it to piece the other truck together and then...
Hopefully save some of these troubles when we go to town.
I'm hoping.
I move that we approve the purchase of the Pierce fire truck. And, uh, so I have to be invited to deliver it.
Have a motion and a second on favor, Richard. Five to zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number thirteen, equipment allocation, consider for approval distribution, wireless routers, door laid wire, and held by Todd County, and a penal license on fighting commission. Chief?
How's it going?
Good.
These are, uh, rockets, uh, PRPC had a grant, he doesn't, doesn't know if he's done that, and they had a, a grant for his rockets, uh, through, uh, six counties, I think, uh, agency of a certain amount, and I'm not sure exactly how many to be received, but I think they had a lot for that, uh, fourteen or fifteen of them, somewhere around that, that area. They're about fifteen hundred dollars each when you purchase them, uh, we can't use as many more because we want to do the, uh, patient candidacy. So what we wanted to do is, uh, PRPC calls in, they have some other agencies that are, that are asking for some of these, and in fact, we, they, uh, you know, one or two of them are listed before we change over. So we have, uh, I was, I'm going to get rid of, however, uh, PRPC, some of them are PRPC, some of them we paid for, some of them are PRPC, so that's it. So we just wanted to just get back to PRPC so they can get a map of the agencies that want to, if you sell them to auction, they're got, they're still, uh, usable, some, some basic rockets, just the hub or the electronics or the connectivity to figure all those computer systems and make your vehicles fire with a wideband, or you could actually take your nuclear out of the vehicle. So, uh, that's, that's what we're going to do. Can we, at least to PRPC?
You want to give them all, not just theirs?
Well, I think we're going to keep four, four of them, still should use, because there's still a lot of other ones that should be given in. I can say that the agency dropped that PRPC with PRPC's, uh, with that.
And we can't use them in the new, um, the new center?
These are vehicles.
They're only for vehicles?
Well, it's for vehicles and what we have in the cars now, don't require these, they got another piece that came with it.
What about constables? Is there a need there for them?
I don't know, there's more with the cop scene, but I don't...
There might be more of the question, I mean, you know, asking...
And that's not saying that they can't get PRPC too, I mean, like, that PRPC is the, uh, the amount that costs anything, they don't charge you, agencies, anything for...
Yeah, I'm just saying before we release it, maybe worth being diligent about asking if others need them, um, at least within the county, that would be my opinion, but...
I know they've got the, uh, cop scene, yes, so, I don't know if they're just, I know they just put a nice, they're, uh, guard into their computers, uh, with this rocket, you put the air guard into the rocket.
No, I mean, I think of that, I think of our fire equipment that now, um, uses some technology within the trucks and the new trucks that you're buying, I mean, I think about a few things, but I'm not the expert.
I can use one, it'd just be nice.
We've got a lot of them, but I...
Maybe you should send an email just to see what needs of the fire.
Can you, can you, can you tell us?
I'd like to know how many we're giving away before we...
Fourteen, we're looking at fourteen, we have nineteen, we'd like to keep four, so at least fourteen we want to give to, that's eighteen, we want to...
Nineteen, I was going to say you're...
See, my man went there with a high.
That, that one.
I'm saying, it would be five of them, it would be five.
No, but...
I have one remaining. Can we give away the remaining to, to PRPC? To give to the others?
I just have a different approach, I'm just like, be diligent to know how many we're giving, how many we can give before we make the move, because we won't see it back, that's the only reason I say that, we, the agenda moves and we don't ever see that.
I can think of a big, but you know, I'll, I'll email it.
Okay.
I'm taking it upon well that in the county, the remaining portion of those will be allowed to be treated.
Quick question, and you'll keep us in the loop of...
I'll let you know how many of them we keep, I'll send an email to them.
Okay. But you're also sending the email to ask the leads that...
Possibly, yes, I would.
It may be, it may be bigger than the constables, it might be worth countywide, there might be a different need that we're not thinking about in this room, I'm just, I'm brainstorming out loud, I'm just trying to make sure we're good stewards.
Do a countywide amendment.
That'd be great.
All right. All right, have a motion and a second on the favor, raise your hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Number fourteen, this has me, um, puzzled, yeah. Amendment of prior resolution to approve an amendment to a prior resolution regarding discharge of affluent onto certain county property to correct a shroner's error. Shroner's error, that's not confused, would you actually strike this, please?
Somebody is preparing that resolution with the rocket press, road, travel stop.
Oh.
And it just corrects...
It's just to correct that? Okay. The rest of the resolution, I said that, you did.
I did. I did. for the travel stop.
Sorry.
Have a motion and a second on the favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Number fifteen, resolution regarding Volkswagen litigation to approve a written resolution confirming the court's granting of an exemption from competitive bidding procedures in relation to hiring a legal counsel in reference to Volkswagen litigation. Mr. Fowler?
This one's not good. The court, the court approved the exemption of the purchasing act, the attorneys were just like a variety, and so it's forgiven.
Who put my name on this?
It's an exemption of, of the purchasing act, or hiring professional services to Volkswagen litigation. You loaded against the...
You need to crack spelling on one of those names.
The first, the first page, for Tan.
Oh.
Oh.
Come on, Tan, that's two.
Don't say anything. I was going to ask you. What you're talking about.
So you didn't take the second here?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure with the first one.
All right, I need a, I need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a written resolution confirming the court's granting of an exemption from competitive bidding procedures in relation to hiring legal counsel to Volkswagen litigation.
Sorry.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed?
Sorry.
I'm staying. Okay, number sixteen, acceptance of, acceptance of donation of road materials to consider acceptance of a donation of road materials offered by the Texas Department of Transportation.
Good morning.
Harold, you today?
This is just something they do every, uh, every year, and on the upside, they're giving them a picture this year. And on the upside, they're giving them a budget this year. And they promised me fifteen hundred tons, so that's about thirty thousand dollars in and, uh, Kalachi, so. And I buy a Kalachi at the end of every budget year, so I'm saving thirty thousand for my pool of cash. But anyway, that's all the same thing that you do every year.
Okay.
I move that we approve the donation of road materials offered by Texas Department of Transportation. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the favor, Richard, in hand. Five to zero, thank you very much. Number seventeen, sublink, sublink contract to consider for approval of contract for internet service to law enforcement. Or anything. Warning.
This is a contract sublink for internet services, kind of making all of the, um, with all the people that are moving out there, a lot of them are covered under our connection that they have here currently. So, we need to have someone up there to support all that. And, uh, it's a year contract, uh, for a hundred megabit, uh, down there. It's going to run seventeen hundred fifty a month, which is quite a bit less than what we're actually currently making for all services, we pay twenty two hundred bucks right now. So, it'll be a little bit less, better bandwidth, and, uh, really, out there, there's not a ton of options for anyone out there without any significant installation costs. So, this is fifty nine dollars insulation cost with this as well, but, uh, that's, okay.
Randy, quick question, is there a reason that we're using one vendor for this and that we have a following agenda item? Like, why do we have two different vendors?
Yeah, actually, it really is, there's, uh, you don't want to have, say, if something happens to one vendor, say downtown here, something happened to their connection point downtown, and that would kill all of that. So you have to, I mean, you kind of want to have...
To diversify.
Right. Just, just to cover your bases. One thing you can't take care of.
Have we always had multiple vendors uptown?
Uh, yeah, we have, we have some pathways connections, and currently, TC is our current, and so it's, we have kind of...
Is this our first contract with sublink for internet services?
It is.
Okay. And then is that because of the location?
The location, yeah.
Is that a benefit because of the location?
Um, again, it's, there are a couple of other vendors who could provide some stuff out there, but there's a lot of installation, just because there's nothing really out there. So, um, this time they were able to come in and say, okay, we can get it installed, it won't cost a lot for that, and...
Usually a couple of other vendors, I'm just...
Maybe it is one of the ones that's out there, um, who look pathways, pathways can without, without a significant, yeah.
And the monthly reoccurring fee, um, to seventeen fifty, will that be offset by, I would assume you're turning off connectivity when you exist?
Right, yes, right, yeah, but right now we pay about twenty two hundred dollars each month for all the different services, but we, to, all, all the people that are going out there to service, yeah, so they will, yeah, a lot of that, what we have wireless things out there, currently developed, we don't pay.
And is that, the vendors that are coming, you're moving away, what, what are those vendors, and what is currently, um, the shares added today?
We have some connections with Tectile, and that's the wireless connection. We have a lot of T one connections to some of the different buildings.
And for this particular contract, is it coming out of the, in particular, the one time set, these, is that coming out of the project? The law enforcement project, or is that coming out of the shares?
We have it budgeted.
In your budget, okay.
Motion to approve the contract with sublink for internet services to law enforcement. Second.
I have this motion and a second on the favor, Richard. Five to zero, thank you, Brandon. Stay right where you are. Number eighteen, ATT contract to consider approval contract for internet services to send video.
Uh, and this is, again, as we have ATT currently, this is for downtown here, uh, it's basically just our contract, that's all, so it's going to be, uh, we are getting...
Yeah, the price.
Um, price, I was about to say price, but now we're getting three times the payment, so, it would be a pretty good deal for us, is what that goes.
What are we paying now, Brandon?
I don't know exactly, off the top of my head.
Twelve ninety seven a month?
Twelve ninety seven a month, and this is going to be eleven oh one. So, um, the bandwidth right now, we have about a hundred megabit downtown, this is going to increase to have two hundred. ATT provides a walk-by addresses to us, excuse me, and it's kind of something we have to have, um, in that certain block, so I think that's really, it's a really good deal, sort of bandwidth and the price.
Move we approve the contract with ATT for internet services, send video. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the favor, Richard. Five to zero, thank you, Brandon. Number nineteen, garden contract to consider for approval and contract internet monitoring and management commissary funds.
They're using a pipe system, basically this, uh, they go check the, and it sounds, it uses five, it records the type, the personal file there, but he didn't also go by there to check on that, so. Uh, been having issues with where our deal is set up, which is kind of a horseshoe type deal there, so, we'll go on one side, and then they may even start talking, whatever, and, and, you know, we'll be at the, at the end of the horseshoe there, the, uh, and we should talk to the officer, we're not thinking which way it came, they'll come back the same way, and then it shows that we didn't check the side of, the side of the dealer, so. Anyway, we're having some problems with, uh, making sure we're checking all the cells for the property manager. So we saw this, uh, I saw the sheriff, we're at the sheriff's conference, we saw this vendor that has guardian, uh, guardian ID, basically it's a handheld device that the officer will carry, he can go to the cell, and there's a tag on the cell, he, uh, gives him two or three inches of that, he can, uh, see all inmates that are in the cell, he'll pull up the picture, and he'll put the names and everything in there. He can actually show them, they go to, uh, recreation, if you give them a razor, you can dock it on this thing, and it basically hooks up to our, our Stellman software, where Stellman software sends all the information through that device. I don't know, it's taking the device, it's really a lot, and you're, a lot of this information, I think the officer will do a better job as far as knowing, you know, if they have checked the cell or not. If they don't check the cell, back at the pod desk, an alert will come up saying that hey, fifteen minutes alert that hey, you didn't check the cell, A one or whatever. So this will actually help, so these officers will only pop the way, we're just going to tell them, and it keeps us safe and compliant, so it helps.
What's, what's the cost of that?
Uh, it's about a little over a hundred thousand, we're paying for this out of our commissary cap, and we pay, we pay for the garden system, I mean, we pay for the, you get a pipe system out of our commissary also. It's pretty, uh, comparable to the pipe system as far as cost wise, uh, we, the little pipe system, all of it, the pipe, basically, uh, it's starting to, it's starting to fail, we can't change the batteries out, I'll check five minutes, I'll bring them up, the little pipe thing that carries them. So, the, uh, handheld deal, like I said, it has medication on it, it's used for medication for, uh, any kind of flag, or personal limitations, child suicide, or whatever, all that comes into it.
I'm sorry, motion to die this way.
The handheld device? Uh, I don't know, but I know, I know they do have a battery, and actually they have it comes with an extra battery to, you know, chilts and charging, so it does have a battery with it, uh, I'm not sure, it makes them here. But it comes with two batteries, and we can handle the, the box. Had the contract, we did have to change some things over here, and basically it's a, you know, it's all kept in the cloud, the information's kept in the cloud. Again, Stellman talks back to you, it doesn't talk to Stellman, but it talks, Stellman talks to you, it's not his way.
Yeah, it's very vulnerable. So, um, how would this, because there is more information that resides on this, whether it's photos, um, that reside on the server, that reside somewhere, has IT been involved at all?
Yes.
Okay, and can you under, can you help me understand how that will overlay into our existing infrastructure, our technology infrastructure?
I think I missed the first part of the question. I'm sorry.
It really doesn't.
No, 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 yeah, we are involved, but I think...
Um, how, how does this fit into our existing infrastructure?
Um, it will, I, I think you're saying it pulls a lot of info from Stellman, so being able to keep track of who's where, you know, the list of, of inmates, uh, you know, it's Stellman, it knows where they're assigned, the cell they're in, where they're at, and this will keep track of, okay, we're moving them to, I don't know, rec area or whatever. Uh, it should overlay, I mean, it's just, it's not really an overlay necessarily, it just pulls that information that is already in Stellman.
Okay, I guess I'm thinking about, since these are mobile devices, and this is real time and pulling from the cloud, that's going to require connectivity, and that's going to work.
Yeah, all, all the, we have all the, all the Wi-Fi already set up out there.
And there's enough on there, uh, because it's different when you're talking about just text or something, but, you know, introduce other things like video, like pictures, those kind of things are bigger in size.
Yeah, we checked it all as we walked through, it shouldn't be an issue as far as I go, we have bandwidth out there to be able to push all that stuff.
And it does do, and you'll take pictures too.
Right, I mean, so that introduces a whole other part of the conversation as opposed to, to the, the pipe, right, I've seen the pipes, I know exactly what you're talking about, and going to check in the cells.
And it's unloaded, unloaded storage for, like, we don't, we, we're paying, like, yearly maintenance fee, which is costing storage.
And where is the maintenance coming from? Is that from, coming from your commissary funds as well?
Yes.
Okay, okay, and I noticed, I think it's a multi-year, uh, it was three years, I remember right, and then it asked, it said that it could increase at, um, three point five percent, okay, maybe you are comfortable with that, I don't know what your fear is. Well, I mean, I, I'm assuming you are if you're moving to it, you know?
No, it's, it's, we're often saying these, for the main safety, it's, I mean, it's not like, hey, this is, right, so...
Right.
There's a reason, uh, that we looked at, and we, like I said, we were at positive type, uh, being in compliance is, is a major issue, and also to me, if you have somebody hanging in there, you didn't, they missed that cell because they went the wrong way, thought they checked it, too late to, for this year, you know, we've been, we've been talking for quite some time about trying to figure out some kind of system, yeah, to make sure that we're checking all these cells.
And it's actually a multiplicity of, uh, so, and, uh...
You know, pull up these reports, you pull up these reports, that tells that, uh, for instance, if anybody says, if they need out of recreation, uh, right now, it's a handheld type log, and we go back and do it, but this is going to be, okay, you, you went to recreation, let's go, scan your tag, that's not the best thing with that technology, so, it's really, and, to be honest with you, I expect it to be a lot, a lot more than a hundred thousand dollars.
So I have a question, but I think it may be a dumb question. On the commissary, what an inmate pays for, is that regulated by jail standards? Like, what typically happens in a business is anytime you buy something, pass it on to your customer, right? I want to make sure that as a result of us moving this, they can still afford things in commissary, and I don't know if that's, those prices are governed by someone.
That's a contrast with, with the commissary companies.
Okay. It stays the same, okay.
Well, they, 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 they have to ask for permission.
If the candy bar goes up, it goes up, but what we get is a percentage stays the same.
Okay.
Because I move that we approve a contract with guardian for inmate monitoring advantage for our commissary. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the favor, Richard. Five to zero, thank you very much. Number twenty, vehicle purchase to consider an active on purchasing a vehicle from Caldwell County, given amount of thirty six thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars utilizing five board contract on five two one dash one six for fire and rescue. Funds are budgeted in twenty seventeen, twenty eight, you go to... Richard, can you all this time give a...
This is a replacement for that community.
And is this replacing the one that you said will not go to auction, but you're saying that the parts are different?
There will be an option for this.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve Caldwell, uh, purchase from Caldwell Country in about thirty six thousand eight hundred and twenty utilizing five board contract five two one dash one six for fire and rescue clients in the current election.
I have a motion, second on the favor, Richard. Five to zero, thank you. Number twenty one, Howard County Memorial, state insurance to, to recognize certificate of liability insurance for about a certain percentage of the county. Beginning October one, twenty seventeen, for these who were thirty first, wanting to match.
I didn't make sure our names were on there, just, um, it's a, it's not a campaign. This was a part of the, uh, contractual agreement, so I thought it was good to have it on the record for the first contract. And then just a follow-up task, do we have, can we get a copy of the final executed agreement? I don't know that I've seen both subparts signed.
Yeah, something walked over to the office, focused on this.
Okay, you're in charge, Brandon, okay, thank you.
Okay, so recognized, um, two. Well, now, I'm considering I can call the woman out, Road and Bridge, discharge of AP Mountain Ladder, the summer lower effective October twenty six, twenty seventeen, our county projects. Do you have something we want to talk about? We started through the...
Oh, it's, 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 no, it don't matter. What do you actually have to do?
Okay, I have a motion.
Twenty two.
Yes.
I move, move the, approve the following for all nine, as stated by the county, uh, for November twenty two. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the favor, Richard, in hand. All right, twenty three, you don't have any, any thing on projects, unless, that they can find? Okay. I can imagine.
I thought we had something we were going to talk about today.
We didn't have any more, uh, vandalism?
We did, I didn't know if it, like, we could talk about it.
Let's talk about it, because I bring back to mind, talk about how bad...
Well, last week, we were waiting for the breaking windows, people were in the end and things like that.
Uh, next was before you go in, I wouldn't go into detail, just to, uh, go with that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's too much, yeah.
That's that, it's all, you should, you know. So, I feel, uh, I think that reported assembly out, and checking, uh, sheriff's department, they worked with, with, uh, the, uh, same, so, uh, how much they did.
Any kind of thing, it's the same.
Right.
I can't imagine, how, how are they, are they just climbing over, is that, is it really easy? I couldn't know.
Well, it's, it's all it is, it's a game. It's just a game. It's a game, it's just go right over. Well, if you were ever a young boy...
I would know. I don't know. How much, do we know about how much damage they did to you?
No. Probably, uh, things like that, you know, things like that, but not...
Okay, okay. One question, Chad and Scott, there is some communication as we close out with Levon and, and, um, Gary Ellison's group, they're scheduled to, I think, pick up on Friday. Is it a fair assumption that after Friday, whatever's not picked up, this county property, I'm thinking through the timeline that you presented?
That's, that's what we felt.
I just, I don't know if it's worth a quick reminder, and maybe that's probably where I'm hoping beyond, but I just, it's been interesting.